I have six o'clock on 22 April, we have a form present and I call the regular session of the Upson County Board of Commissioners to order. All right, first up is the invocation that we have. Chair, all right, well, I have the invocation and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
The Upson County Board of Churches appreciates that we are allowed to pray and we're here by invitation, so first off, thank you so much again that we can pray over these types of meetings. So, Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus and we say, "How do it be thy name? You're the best thing for this planet and we come in here saying thank you so much for sending a rescue plan through your Son." And I know tonight, Father, the stuff in, it's going to be discussed here, 100 years, it's going to be the last thing on our mind, but for tonight, we need wisdom. And I pray over justice and good decision-making processes for the blessings of this county. I pray abundance over this county because this county is growing and we need you, Father, to help manage and mature it in the way that you see in your kingdom. So I bless these men and women and their sacrifice, their personal lives, I speak blessing over them. For all the time that they're putting in, it doesn't even add up to the clock. I ask, Father, that you would continue that this board would honor you in their thoughts and you bless them in their personal life. I speak peace to them. And I speak peace to this room, that your heart and mind would be here for all the conversation and we thank you for this. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Yep, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item H under new business and it's for the purpose of discussion and potential approval of resurfacing additional roads in the County Village subdivision.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Watson to add to the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It wasn't on the published agenda. Okay, so I have a, I have a motion, Commissioner Watson, a second, Commissioner Ellington, all in favor? Pass, you announce for me. All right. All right, so next item up is a public hearing on special exception for Dennis Roth of Milton, Florida, has requested that Upson County permit an AR special exception for section 505 D dot two. Okay, I wasn't reading that, but okay. So this is so that he can, his family can live in an RV during the construction of his home. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
It's on move.
Second motion, a second, all in favor? Okay, the hearing is open and the applicant is Dennis Roth.
Yeah, I go by Scott. Thank you for your time, looking forward to being an Upson County citizen and benefiting the town, looking forward to it. So, that's all I've got on the move for questions.
Okay, Doug, did you have anything to add?
No, I could give the staff report, but nothing outside of that.
So summary is, he's moving to Upson County from Florida. He purchased seven acres, I think it was, out in western Upson County and plans to build a home and he's asking to live in RV while he builds those homes. So, any concerns from, any questions from the board?
Has construction started?
No, we've cleared the lot, so.
Yeah, we typically approve these types of things, so I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Watson, a second from?
I'll go in second while we're going to go to the public hearing before we.
He's the only one to sign up.
Doug's got my presentation too.
I don't have to yet.
They don't have to.
I asked Doug if he wanted, he said he said he could, I said, I think we understand.
I'll second the motion, I'm with the lot.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion from Commissioner Watson, a second from Commissioner Ellington, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask, is there going to be a time limit on it?
We have one year.
Yeah, it's all in there.
Traditionally, it's 12 months.
Right, and then there's a certain time to be out after the certificate of occupation is issued.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Can you close that?
Congratulations, thank you guys.
And we can close.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearings.
Got a motion to close from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Watson, all in favor? All right, next item on the agenda is another public hearing on Serenity Lake subdivision. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
It's on move.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Ellington, all in favor? Okay, the public hearing is open. The way this public hearing will run, we will have a staff report from Doug. After we have the staff report and the board can ask questions for clarity from Doug, after that, we'll go to the applicant, I think the applicant has a representative. They'll have 10 minutes to brief their intent and any concerns. After that, we'll go to the list and on the list, you signed up either a for or against. We'll go to the for first, there'll be three minutes for each person who's speaking for. Then we'll go to against, there'll be three minutes for each person speaking against. And then we'll return to the applicant and they'll have 10 minutes to rebut anything they may have heard from the against side. Okay, everybody understand? All right, Doug, floor is yours.
There's a, somewhere we can put whether we were for or against it?
Yes.
Or if you wanted to speak.
Did you sign up?
Oh, just to speak. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the property owner and applicant is 10 Acres Lake LLC. This is a 266 acre project fronting Old Alabama Williams and Double Bridges Road on five parcels. You'll see the graphics later and to give us a better illustration of what that is. The proposal is for 124 single-family lots, private road system, light commercial slash clubhouse area, recreational uses, storage units, and an RV parking area. This is unique, we have not had a lot of PM zoning districts go through the process. I believe this is the third one in the history of zoning in Upson County, so this is fairly unique. And here's the description of this sorts of things that are expected in the PM zoning district, that it's for planned neighborhoods or communities, more flexible and creative concepts. The idea is still to preserve the natural amenities of the area to create a more desirable environment, efficient use of the land, and an environment in this area for a stable character in the area and not a destabilization of development. So that's what's envisioned when we apply the PM zoning for a particular area. The proposal specifically is for 65 lots in the 1.1 to 1.5 acre size, 28 lots from 1.51 acres to 2 acres, and there are 31 lots that are 2 acres or more. There are five phases, you see that in the staff reporting and I'll get to that in a little bit, geographic phases. Now, it was communicated to me very strongly that these phases will be concurrent, not sequential, so we don't wait for one to finish before the next one will start, so it won't be that way, because if you look at the numbers, they don't quite add up. So, that was important to be explained to me and for me to explain to you. The phases will be concurrent with some overlap, not sequential. On the lot, there's a portion of Reeves Creek that runs almost through the middle, so that not only is there a creek, but there's a flood plain and obviously this is an opportunity to make that into amenity and to preserve it and to protect it, even though it's surrounded by development. So, obviously, the project does rely partially in Zone A, the special flood zone area. The zoning in the area is AR everywhere and nothing else but. This is a highly wooded area, there are some cleared areas here and there. You're also not too far from the Sproul Bluff State of Georgia Wildlife Management Area. There's also a large area to the south of planted pines. That's probably the only agriculture that's serious anyway, there may be some other cows or goats somewhere, but the substantial agriculture is those trees to the south. The road in the area, roads in the area are Old Alabama Road, which is a major arterial through the county, Williams Road, which is a local street, as well as Double Bridges Road. Now, the Double Bridges section is very small, it's only about 42 feet, so there's not a lot of frontage there, but there is some. And that's where the primary access will come from there and from Williams Road. Potable water will be supplied by individual wells, at least that's been the conversation up to point, although that has been one of the points of controversy. I'm sure that the applicant will talk more about the water issue tonight. Again, the request is from AR to PM, these are the basic descriptions of the zoning districts. Also, we involve our comprehensive plan in this. You have a more detailed description in the report, I'm not going to go through that whole description. The part that's been focused on mostly is that this is a forestry character area, this is the description of it where it's an emphasis on forestry and timber cultivation, residential use, and this is directly from the comp plan, residential use of a low-density nature incidental to these activities is also allowable. We have the general review standards for all of our rezonings. And again, most of these deal with how it affects the neighbors, whether it's going to be a nuisance or not. Obviously, when you add 124 homes to an area, there's going to be impacts, all sorts of impacts. The minimum house size in this particular area, however, will be rather large, 2,500 square feet, with the intended price points between a half a million dollars to one and a half. I've also heard 600,000, so anyway, the lower price point will be somewhere in that area. Now, the AR zoning that's there now would allow, is a 2 acre minimum, but it also allows not only the primary residents on that acreage, but also a guest quarters. And it's a huge loophole in our AR, it's been there long, maybe almost from the beginning of zoning. So actually, in these lots, you could have a second home, and a second home, the guest quarters could actually be bigger, because there's no cap on the guest quarter size, could be bigger than the main home. And there's a discussion in the staff report about what this means and I won't go into the detail there, but if we stuck with the AR and they maximized, it could be a build out anywhere from 100 to maybe 200 homes by right on the property, depending on a number of factors, but that's at least the potential of up to about 200. If it stayed with AR, and again, this was a heavy discussion with the planning commission, what would that mean? The clubhouse, which is proposed, if it was an AR, would only be allowed by special exception. The retail uses wouldn't be permitted at all, the mini-storage would not be permitted, the outdoor recreation areas would be permitted, there's at least a generic reference to most of those things, and the centralized RV parking area that would be considered a commercial area would not be permitted if this stayed with the AR zoning. And here's the staff discussion again about the standard, the standard standards, the ones that we use for all rezonings. Again, most of these deal with the impacts to the neighbors and the environment. Obviously, there will be impacts to the neighbors' environments. Now, do they cross the line over to a nuisance or something that is more than just the traditional impacts of a subdivision? We don't really know that. The planning would indicate it's not planned to be that way, they're taking good care and the planning is including those thoughts and ideas and all of these things are taken into consideration with the plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval. The reasons that I'm recommending approval are that this is well-planned, it is unique to the county and intended to be of a very high quality. We went through the comp plan and we had the issue of housing being that we were missing all kinds of housing. Now, obviously, this is a very small niche in that housing that we're missing, but we have to have high-end housing too, and that's what this would be. Had we kept the AR as was in the previous moratorium, 1 to 12, this probably would not be appropriate based on that density, but that didn't happen. This is a little different, so you've got one lot per acre and again, you see it's not uniformly, one unit per acre, whereas the AR would be more prescriptive and would allow that other house, however. And then there is a number of goals and policies also discussed in the comp plan, which I won't go into. Depending on how you look at those particular goals and policies, they are favorable towards the development and in some ways, you know, depending on, for instance, environmental impacts, you may interpret this as negative because something is being built on the property. Now, this portion here, I'm not going to go through this, you know, as part of the staff report, is the zoning district, the requirements, the PM. I'll only clarify right now, but what's in red is what I added. We went through a number of iterations with the planning commission to get through and try to filter through what the conditions of this zoning district would be. So where you see red, underlined, is where I made a recommendation to what Serenity Lake proposed. Where you see a cross out, that is where they had some language that I did not think needed to be in there or felt differently. So that's the reference point, is whether that red would be in or out. The rest, basically, if it's in black, we agree that that's appropriate language for the actual zoning district. The zoning district takes up about five traditional pages. Again, I'm going to skip by all that. If we get back to it later, I can pull up the presentation and we can go through the parts of that individually. There are also recommended conditions. There are some things that, as you know, with rezonings, we often require conditions of approval. These are things that aren't necessarily appropriate to be in the zoning district, but they still might be conditions of approval that you might want to have as part of any approval of the project. The planning commission held several continued public hearing over three meetings, but at its regular April 14th, '25 meeting, the planning commission unanimously recommended denial of the project, four to oh, four to zero. We had one absentee at that evening. The reasons for their recommendation for denial is that the project, they felt, does not meet the comprehensive plan requirements, the project does not meet the character of that Sproul Bluff area and the corridor leading to Sproul Bluff. It's not low-density, it's high-density, and it doesn't fit into the forestry character area, which is again, part of the comp plan. Also, in the report, there were a large number of written comments, you have copies of all those. This is a list of those people, some of them did contribute twice, so you have copies of all those comments that were submitted to the planning commission in writing. So, what we're considering, this is the bottom line for this part, is that you're being asked to approve basically four things. If you are going to approve Serenity Lake, one, the zoning district, which takes up those five pages with that red lettering that we may or may not wordsmith tonight, those conditions of approval, those five conditions of approval that I recommended as your staff, then by ordinance, you have to adopt what's called the development plan. In this case, I think we'll interpret the development plan, what you have in front of you in the large format, now it actually says preliminary plat, that is an incorrect label. We are not even in, into the plat process, that comes after this. Obviously, we don't plat it anything different than what's already out there or already in AR if this is denied. So, we'll call that the development plan. Hopefully, we'll get them through, you know, if their project is approved, we'll get it relabeled as a development plan. That will be the general concept of what it is, but we will not hold them to that plan to the minute detail that we would say in a subdivision plat, where they do have to be exact. So, that large format, and I believe you received the smaller copy in your packet, is what we're calling the development plan by ordinance, that has to be adopted, approved, or denied. And then the development schedule, which is coming up here, I've got that and you've got in your packet, that's also something subject to approval or denial by the board commissioners tonight. All right, this is the aerial that was originally put into the packet with the planning commission. It's not the clearest in terms of the boundaries of the project, but it does very well show Reeves Creek through the middle of the project and the larger blue area is the flood plain. So you can see there is considerable flood plain on the project, not so much in that northeast corner. Now, I just introduced this one just to better show the boundaries. Obviously, everything in yellow is the boundaries of the project. That small portion to the east comes out on Williams Road, so that's where it contacts Williams Road. This is the zoning map in the area, you can see it's AR completely surrounding the project in this area. And this is what you've got in front of you, what we're calling the development plan or the concept plan. This is that phasing that either needs to be approved tonight or denied, whatever you're going to do. And then again, we would expect them, and this has been discussion by the board of commissioners in the past, is that we need to have basically some way to say, "Wait a minute, if you're not progressing, we want you to come back and talk to us in a certain amount of time." In this particular zoning district, that's already built in and you have an exact schedule here, so if things are not progressing as they should, you already have it built in that the project would be brought back to you. Now, this is the zoning, the phasing map. It's not oriented correctly because what is to the left is actually north. However, the first phase is in magenta would be phase one, then the blue would be phase two, green, three, gold, four, and then blue, five. For some reason, when I transferred it over to PowerPoint, the numbers fell off, I'm not quite sure why, but that's the geographic phasing of the five phases. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the staff report.
I've got some questions for staff. Okay, go ahead.
Just to clarify a couple things, I didn't see anything on here from the planning commission. All the recommendations had staff on them, is that correct?
No, we went over that.
Let's see. Because you kept saying staff and I just, when you say in staff, you referring to Doug, is that correct?
Yes. Here's the planning commission, again, April 14th, '25, they recommended denial.
Right, I get that, but prior to that, I mean, this week, there was three meetings, there was no recommendations during that time?
Denial, that's what they recommended at the final meeting was.
They never talked about any issues that they had?
We had lengthy talks about what the zoning district would look like, but at the end of the third meeting, they didn't make those recommendations.
Okay, and the next thing, I have a question I have for you. You had on there, you had the part about the comprehensive plan, you know, you left out one word on comprehensive plan. You had forestry, but you didn't have ag on there. It says that in the comprehensive plan, ag, forestry and ag for that area.
All right, well, I'm not sure if there's two of them there or not, I don't know. You do have the map in your packet, so I guess.
I just want to clarify that for me and anybody else that potentially may not be paying close enough attention to that, but I just, the wordsmith in here just is leading me down a path. That's all I'm saying about that.
Commissioner Biggs, you got any questions?
Not staff.
Okay, I'll piggyback off of Commissioner Ellington there. So, to be clear, they were making recommendations, but those recommendations would only come forward if they had done approval, right?
Well, they could have made a recommendation, we recommend denial, but if you do approve it, but they didn't do that.
Okay, okay, all right, and then there are reasons for denial we have here, did not meet comprehensive plan. Do we know what they were talking about specifically there?
Well, I took this almost word for word from the meeting.
Yeah, I watched the meeting, so, all right.
What about paragraphs of explanation?
Yeah, so, because I have the comprehensive plan in front of me, that's why I'm asking. And then we'll skip down to, this is not a low-density but a high-density housing project. So, in the comprehensive plan for forestry, it lists primary future land use, this is from the comprehensive plan, low-density residential, right? So, low-density residential equates to what in our ordinance?
Well, you only have two densities based on our zoning. You basically have one unit per acre or you have one unit per two acres. Again, you've got the accessory unit where really AR, if you do guest quarters, you've got units on two.
But only one zoning in our ordinance has low-density in parentheses behind the zoning, right? That's R1.
I honestly don't know if that wording is in there.
That is, all right, so, R1 is one unit per acre, right? All right, I'm just being clear, all right? So, comprehensive plan says low-density residential, character of the Sproul Bluff corridor, is there a Sproul Bluff corridor document?
Not in any formal sense that I'm aware of, no.
So we have corridor regions for Highway 36, Highway 74, and Highway 19.
And 80, yes.
And 80, but not for Sproul Bluff?
No, not in any formal way.
All right, all right, just, I saw a clarification. Any other questions? All right, thank you, thank you Doug.
Yes, sir.
All right, next up is the applicant, and who do we have speaking on behalf of the applicant? Okay, she will step up and state your name and then, do we have the clock ready? Wait till she's set.
I guess we need to coordinate the clock and we also have a PowerPoint presentation from the applicant, so.
Okay, so 10-minute time limit, however you want to use.
Okay.
Okay, so you can't show the clock in the PowerPoint, is that where we're getting that? We'll have to count you down.
Give me the two-minute warning.
Let's put it on the presentation because I think everyone wants to see.
I can run the clock.
And run the clock and if you could just give him like five.
I'll give you the two-minute warning.
Give me five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
We're going to share, we're going to share a time. Okay, well, I'm Dan Springetti, I'm representing Serenity Lake, my address is 975 West American Drive, New York, Wisconsin.
Just wait till we can get an old spring.
This is technical difficulty, I don't know why it's not coming up. My presentation came up, but this is not coming.
It's on two.
HTMS two?
Well, this is a thumb drive with their presentation, so I'd.
There's your clock. We can put it on, we can, if you have it on thumb drive, put it on hers.
Try it.
I don't have it. Oh, is it on here?
No, they have a thumb drive. You ready?
Yep. Okay, then we're ready.
Thank you. Our owners are here today, Jim and Otter Faulkner, Scott and Stephanie Goll, and Andrew and Sally Cross. Our engineering firm is Moon Meeks, and Larry French is here to represent us tonight. Basically, I want to describe the subdivision, it's 124-site, low-density project, it's completely self-contained. What I mean by that is the tree line along Alabama Road is significant, it's very heavily wooded, and also, all the other sides of the project are heavily wooded, and we like that because we want to preserve the characteristics of Upson County, which is a rural community, and that's really important to us, is that it feels rural, you really don't even know it's there. There's one small section where the entrance would be where you might see a couple of homes, but for the most part, you wouldn't even know what's there, and that was by design. This property is a one-of-a-kind property. We have to be good stewards of that property. If anyone's blocked the property, it's very unique, very special, and like I said, it's one-of-a-kind. If you go to the preliminary site, please Doug?
Next screen.
Next screen, thank you. So, if you look along Alabama Road, you'll see that parcel A is a pretty significant parcel, and all of the lots along Alabama Road, so that was by design, so that again, the density and the size of those lots are quite large, and again, that was to be a good neighbor and get all of our, you know, our low-density up inside of it. Our home values, if we can go to the next one, our home values, these are the type of homes that we're going to be building, and very, very high-end, very high-quality. These will range anywhere from $650,000 to $1,505,000, and very, very high-quality landscaping, possible individual pools, that type of thing. The topo or the topography allows us to put a bigger footprint of a house, and actually, it's a smaller footprint because of the topography, because a lot of these homes will have what we call walkouts. So, I like that because it's, what we do in development is the art side of what we're doing, and it's getting these homes to fit in in between and offset each other, so they look like they've always belonged there. And that's the key to what we're doing. Our amenities include, if you could go to, those are some more of our homes, our amenities, our amenities include a 10,000-square-foot clubhouse, which you see in the lower-left corner there. It has a swimming pool, a gathering area, a playground, pickleball, and an outdoor living area. If you look at the architectural storage that we're going to be offering, we want it to be architecturally pleasing to what we're doing in the subdivision, so you can see the cupolas, you can see the shed roofs, the timber frame structures and so on. And that's because we want our clients within our, only within our subdivision, to have a place to park their RVs and things like that, and not be in front of their homes. If you look at the postal kiosk, which is your upper-left-hand side, again, you can see it's timber frame, it's quite a nice postal kiosk, but again, it's going to be in the front of it, and we want it to be the handshake into the subdivision. We also have a walking and biking and hiking trail that goes around the perimeter of the property. In my opinion, this is one of my favorite properties I've been involved with. It checks all my boxes, it's rural, it has great topography, we've got 100 feet of topography difference along everywhere on the property, there's really not a bad lot on the property. It's wooded, large lots, waterfrontage, and it's truly a time capsule of Thomason, and that's the draw for people to live here. Peace, tranquility, the ability for families to unplug and get ice cream downtown, ride their bikes, and sit on the front porch. The same reason you all live here is the same reason people will live in our subdivision. The bonus is, all of the ownership group will live in Serenity Lake, including myself. We ask for you to vote yes to the PM zoning consistent with the recommendation of Doug Carrier, Upson County Planner. And I'm going to have Larry come on up and introduce some of these engineering side.
Five minutes.
Good evening, my name's Larry French, I'm with Moon Meeks and Associates, Inc., out of Columbus, Georgia, 100 Southern Way, and this is our 75th week year in consecutive business in the engineering and landscape architecture, so we're pretty proud of that long-term history. I'm not quite that old, my dad's 97, and I've been at it, this is my 47th year. And I've spent quite a bit of time on the property early on, looking at all of the topography, the natural waterways, the hydrology, studied the soils, maps that had been provided by AES out of, I believe they're out of Noonan, Georgia. And we had a hydrogeologist come in and do some preliminary look at the potential for wells and distribution system within the property. And they're out of Kennesaw, Georgia, and we've worked with both of those firms in the past and feel very confident in their abilities, they're very professional and very knowledgeable in their categories. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of technical terms on engineering and that kind of thing. What we can tell you is that we're going to do our very best to provide within the framework of all your local ordinances, as well as provide within the framework of the Georgia State Erosion Sedimentation Control Act, the National Pollution Control Act, the NPDES permit, as well as the Georgia Stormwater Manual. We plan on developing a private road system for the owner. It'll be a paved section, it'll have roll curb and gutter is the plan, so that we won't have to demo curb and gutter as each driveway is for. So, it's a mountable system, that'll be a Georgia DOT standard that we're very familiar with using. And we certainly will plan on all of the basics that you would have in any good subdivision design, stormwater management, detention, as well as water quality, because we know that the runoff is going to enter into the existing lake and in the downstream sections of the creek. We have in-house environmental that we use on every development, we've had preliminary environmental work done relative to the state waters and wetlands within the site, so we're planning on honoring all of those corridors or the lowland timber areas and any kind of native species habitat. If you go to the next slide, talk a little bit about fire protection, these next two slides talk about water. Water distribution systems, there is no county water available to this site, and therefore, we're looking at individual wells, we've contacted the health department as well as the fire marshal, they'll be making the final decisions on the fire systems and how we will be able to activate a dry pump system within the lake. Next slide, please. Utilities, we've talked about the extension of the water line, it's about two miles. Our average expenditure on a mile of water line that we see today is about $1 million a mile, so that's a pretty aggressive cost to absorb in a development such as this. Next slide, please. We've talked a little bit about the hydrogeologist, obviously, there's a little bit more study that will need to be done in a more detailed manner, this was a very preliminary study, but we'll be looking into all of that to make sure that whether we can do individual or maybe several community wells, we'll be making those determinations as we go forward in the actual design. Next slide, please. Wells and septics, obviously, we'll have to follow the state health department codes as well as the local health department code, so we'll be in contact with them. We've done some preliminary layouts on smaller lots, and we've done a number of systems very similar to this. We know that the final plat will ultimately, will only approve the lots that the health department will approve. So, the aspect of having maybe a few lots that don't get approved, that in 47 years, I don't think I've ever got one that all of them got approved, there's always something. But we will look at a standard conventional as well as technology that's appropriate and approvable by the health department. I think that kind of ends the engineering side of it for me, but if you have any questions later on, I'll be right here. Thank you.
It's time. We'll now move into public comment, we'll start with the four. So, first person I have is Doug Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Doug Peck, and I, my property and home abuts the property for the new development, and quite frankly, I'm very excited about it. I just, you know, I'm a, I've been a Thomason resident for almost 20 years, my daughter and granddaughter live with me now, and just to see this level of development in Upson, I think is wonderful. What they've done is beautiful, I don't know that there's another one like it that I have ever seen, I wish it was here when I first decided to come. But one of the main reasons that I think it really is exciting is for the businesses of Thomason, it's going to bring millions of dollars of building materials and food and gas, and I just really am excited for the business of our community, they need the boost and they deserve it, and I'm all for it. As far as what little I know about the issue, I do know that I work for a ministry at Be In Health, which is at the Thurston Fire Department and my church is Hope of the Generations, and I travel about four times, three, two to four times a day, and probably a third to half that time, I never see another vehicle. And so, the thought of there being a few dozen an hour of new vehicles is just, to me, I just don't think it's going to be noticeable at all. I don't think I've ever come behind another vehicle and had to wait to turn, and so, I just think it's a wonderful addition to our community, and so, I'm really for it. I thank you for the time to be able to present.
Next four is Edward, is it's French?
That's me.
Okay.
Irish spoke.
You're good?
Yes.
All right. Dan Spaghetti, I'm going to butcher your name.
Springetti.
Springetti.
Yeah, I've already, I'm just on the list, so I can.
Okay. All right. Audrey Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Faulkner and I will speak in rebuttal.
And that's Newton Galloway, okay? And then I have Chris Young.
My name's Chris Young, lived in Thomason my whole life, 53 years, I'm definitely for this project. When we look at what we're steering Thomason towards, you know, you can decide on, well, I think a lot of the, the small factors are going to come into play, you know, as this grows into it, but as far as getting this project moving is what really needs to happen, in my opinion. You know, the families that are coming in and buying these homes, they're going to have more family of theirs that come into our community. You can't stop growth in our community. If you put a boundary on one of our exterior roads and just turn folks away, there's going to be a lawsuit pretty quick, and you're not going to stop growth. So, you got to decide on what kind of growth you want to have, if you want to have a positive growth with higher-end homes and a nicer community, something, I've never seen a project in Thomason for a subdivision with this much plant, the amount of time and effort that's, and when you talk about low-density and high-density, I mean, you talk about the corridor, you can drive a mile down the road and hit the end of Old Alabama Road, and it starts Sunnyside subdivision, all right? A lot of great homes in there, a lot of our families grew up in those homes, but those are half-acre homes, I mean, they're on half-acre lots, and it was packed in there because it was housing that was needed then. Now, in my opinion, you know, there's a lot of calls saying that we need housing in Thomason, but if you ride around and look, there's tons of houses for sale, too. If we need housing in Thomason, why aren't we, you know, why aren't we dipping into building apartment complex with, you know, 150, 200 apartments in it? We need to think about which direction we're steering our area into, and that's just my opinion on that.
Okay. We'll now transition to against, first up is Matt Bricker.
Good evening, my name's Matt Bricker, I live at 205 Devil Bridge Road. I'm not opposed to growth, we need responsible growth. This development doesn't comply with the Upson 4 Plan as far as Nancy goes. The roads are not built for the traffic that comes with the development of this size, in my opinion. I meet the school buses every morning, and it's a struggle to pass them. The individual pools that they're talking about will be a drain on the water system, I believe, because you have to, if I'm not mistaken, you drain them and refill them every year, so you're going to have, depending on how many pools you have, you're going to be pulling a lot of water. When the Faulkners approached us, they told us they were going to be like 10 to 20 acre lots, we thought that's great, you know, they're backed right up to our property, so we were all for it. They went to the zoning board, then it was 40 lots, now it's 124, so the plan that you see tonight is different than the plan the zoning board had, which I don't understand how that happens. It should be the same, in my opinion. There was a controlled burn that they did, and it got out of control. They had to bulldoze through our fence, they bulldozed up some trees. Our neighbor had, I think he said, 40 or 50 fence posts burned, we never even got a, hey, sorry, or can we come fix that or anything? So, that's aggravating when you talk about improvement, something like this, if people are going to be honest with you. The tree line that they say is decimated, I mean, if you drive along Old Alabama, you can see into the subdivision, into the back of it, as you're driving. of it, as you're driving along. I mean, that's how many trees have been taken out, so there's no buffer. Behind our property, same thing. The buffer is nothing what it used to be. After reviewing the new documents that were submitted since last week's zoning meeting, I feel a lot have changed. It seems different from what I've seen, and I strongly urge you to vote against the rezoning. Thanks, Rachel.
Next up is Ms. Jessica Meyer.
Jessica Meyer, 75 Double Bridge Road. Applicants stated in the past that only a handful of the houses would be less than two acres. We see today that it's going to be 93 houses that are two acres or less. Doesn't seem to be a very honest assessment. Next is the ridiculous notion that AR zoning allows you to build two houses on two acres. A guest house with its limitations is now a permanent second residence in anyone's book, so I wish we'd quit being told that they can build two houses, 200 houses. Current AR zoning, one house per two acres would be, with 200 buildable acres, comes up to 100 homes, way less than 124. Come on, and size of housing is not our primary concern. We're against the PM commercial side of this rezoning, which in no way matches the comprehensive plan or character map set for this area. That is also what the planning board stated at the last meeting when they chose not to recommend this project, and we all believe they got it right. We all recommend you do not approve this.
Next I have Sheila McHale. Did I say it right?
Michael.
Michael, I'm sorry.
I did not realize I signed up to speak. So excuse me. We live at 3946 Old Alabama, directly across from the main entrance to this property. When we bought here, we came up from Florida to live close to our in-laws. My mother-in-law has since passed away. My father-in-law turned 90 in January. We love our properties, 22 and 1/2 acres, very natural. Reeves Creek borders one side of our property, and it is beautiful, and that's why we bought it. We looked for a couple of years for a piece of property that was close to them, convenient for us. This will significantly change our lives. We sit on our front porch and we look across at the property. They have thinned out the trees. It is noticeably different. The traffic that goes back and forth to Spruill Bluff, especially during the summertime, is heavy. There is a fair amount of traffic anyway. It's a narrow two-lane road. We just had an incident last week where my husband had to call rescue because a lady turned over in the ditch on that narrow road in her side-by-side. So I don't think it's going to allow for the impact of traffic that we're talking about. Also, that entrance, how can you use that small entrance for so many houses and so many people that live there to come out onto Old Alabama and not expect it to impact people? Amen. I mean, the beauty of the place is destroyed by things like that. I lived in South Florida 20 years. You talk about a concrete jungle. I was so glad to get out of it. When we moved up from Florida, which was Gainesville, Florida, we thought, this is heaven on earth, peace, quiet. It'll never be the same. And unfortunately, we don't want to live next to a neighborhood like that. A neighborhood, that's what it is. There are a lot of houses planned for that piece of property, and it will change the entire area there. And that road, I just feel like it's not going to accommodate Spruill Bluff and this neighborhood and the commercial businesses there. So I ask that you consider it, everybody else in that community. I know money speaks, but we have a lot invested there also, all of us.
Thank you. Okay. And I have Rick Michael.
I sounded up, too.
As my wife said, we moved up from Florida. I was born and raised in Florida, and I hated leaving there, but it has grown in leaps and bounds. And as she stated, we moved up to be with my parents, close to them in their older years. We love it here. I've always loved the hardwood ridges, and I've hunted here since probably the mid-'70s, late-'70s. I would come up every weekend and hunt. And I hate to see the growth happen here that has happened in Florida. Y'all really don't know what you're asking for unless you've lived in Florida and seen it. You can't imagine it. Start going on these websites and pricing homes in Florida now as if you wanted to move there. It's outrageous. I mean, these five, six, $700,000 homes, that's the average house down there. That's an average 3-2 home. Some of them are single-wide on a half-acre lot. You'll spend $300,000 for it. If you want it happening here, then vote for it. And as when my dad passes, we'll probably sell our place. This isn't my forever home, but I hate to see what's already happened to it. They thinned out a lot of that property over there. They say it won't be visible from the road. That's not so. I can see it from my front porch. When they put houses up in there, it'd be even more visible. And that's not what I spent three years hunting up here for. If I wanted to look at homes, I'd have moved in town. It saved me a lot of money and time, you know? But that's just me and my opinion. I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Next I have Janice Bowles.
Can you turn to the map before you might get it started?
Which map?
The map of the project.
The layout?
The layout. The little streets and everything? I'm sure he has it.
No.
We have one on the wall.
Yeah, we can refer to that. That was their presentation.
The Three Rivers Reeding Plan is something that in Upson County we are covered by also. So I know we have Upson Plan, but we also have something that several counties plans, and one of their priority needs is preservation of rural and agricultural land. And so I ask that you take that into consideration when you think of this project. I had many concerns. First of all, the gentleman who was earlier here and was approved is my next-door neighbor, so I'm definitely not against building and growth. He has seven acres, and he's going to be building one right next to me. We've got plenty of elbow room. What I do object is a miniature Silver Town plot right by Spruill Bluff. This development, as we went through with the planning commission, was not ready to answer a lot of the questions, and I feel that they still are not there. One of my major concerns is the water, and I don't know the gentleman of the first seat's names, but he indicated that there was a hydrology report, and yes, there is. Groundwater services of Kennesaw dated March the 9th reported that the middle section would probably result in wells with low yields. And this is the area where Block B, and it's the map, I'll show you where that is. There are 80 homes in Block B. So we're talking about 34 in Block A that will be okay, according to their report, and 80 in Block B that would be in the area where P3 and P4 are. And that is not something that they feel will have high yield in order to accommodate a home. They do recommend two or more high-yield and community wells. And the comment that was made earlier by that gentleman was that, you know, we'll look into it. I don't think that we need to look into questionable water for 80 homes and approve a project. So that's something to me that is a high concern. Traffic was mentioned, and I also have problems with the traffic. If you look again at the map, there are two entrances into the subdivision from Old Alabama Road. The first one in Block A, the other one, thank you, the other one below that. Can you show, can you point where the clubhouse will be? All right, keep the thing there. People in Block A, when they want to go to the clubhouse, if they have a car and they want to load it with the sunscreen and the bags and the baby instead of walking, will need to drive out Exit A, go down, have a meeting, hundreds of feet, come back in entrance.
Okay. That concludes your time. I wanted to let you finish your thought.
Okay. That's a concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Added traffic.
Ms. Tammy Boyle.
That's the last one, right?
Let me see. No, I got one more.
Tammy Boyle, I live at 245 Charlie Jones Road, and a lot of the people that have spoke have said some of the things that are similar, but I would like to say, over the past few months, there's been a push to define rural, and it's been expressed that the definition of this could aid in the direction and growth of our county. In 2023, the Comprehensive Report, which was developed by Community Input Participation and Leadership, came together to develop this plan where it outlined this portion, particularly in Upson, as timberland and active agriculture. This project, regardless of the zoning, is not rural in nature. 52% of the homes proposed in this project were built on lot sizes between 1 and 1 1/2 acres, and the other 22 on lot sizes between 1 1/2 and 2. So basically, 75% of the subdivision will be on less than two acres. This is not rural, and it doesn't match the current existing surrounding property. Each of these homes will need septic systems and wells, and while subdivision zoning may allow those on one acres, I believe AR zoning requires two or more. In case you're considering this based on the tax digest, please consider the unintended consequences of this. Allowing this can bring economic benefits, but it can also potentially drive up the land costs, making it harder for residents to afford land and housing. This project may also attract more of its kind and perhaps more commercial activity, causing the rural and agriculture atmosphere and identity of this area to be lost. It can lead to increased pressure on land resources and potentially increase the cost for taxpayers and infrastructure, like water and other services, fire, sheriffs to patrol, et cetera. It can also drive other landowners in the area to convert their property to residential use, reducing the overall amount of rural acreage in Upson County. This type of project contributes to the sprawl and fragmenting of agriculture landscapes that will affect wildlife. So I ask you, what are we trying to attract? Are we trying to attract part-time residents that might come here? What happens if these partially lived-in homes become luxury term rentals? The county needs housing, but they just don't need this. Thank you.
Thank you. It's like Ann Carroll. Daniel, sorry.
Well, I've been listening to the facts and trying to cut my 30-minute talk down to three minutes. So as a psychotherapist, I'm going to talk about feelings, so. We all didn't come here tonight because we didn't have anything else to do. We came to preserve what we have. I was thinking about it yesterday. When I turned off of Highway 74 onto Old Alabama Road to go to my farm, two miles, I didn't see a vehicle going by two miles to my farm. I saw a family walking together. I saw a young man pedaling a bicycle fast, and I slowed down for a deer. Now, if you all think I want that taken from me, you're crazy. I do not want chaos. At age 90, I'm looking for peace. Most of the people here did not inherit their property. They worked, they saved, they planned, they searched, they looked, and then they decided, this is it. And so we've all moved there, and now we hear that paradise might be taken from us. And I know that the majority of the people here have worked really hard for what they have. You in this program, you don't bring peace to us. You bring some chaos. The intersection of the roads at my farm, we're going to have to have a turnaround. I don't want to take any of my property to do it, but when I think of 100, 150 cars driving down the road, I've lost paradise. So I want you to consider emotionally what it would do. One of you have alluded to you wanting it to be Mayberry. Well, I'm going to tell you, we've already got Mayberry. We don't want Mayberry destroyed. Someone else is a member of this has said, we want to assure you all that your land will not be bothered, your animals will be safe. Well, that's wonderful, but what about the people? We are the part of that community. We do not want change. In a world that's chaotic, our community is a special place.
Thank you. Now we'll revert back to the applicant. We'll have 10 minutes to rebut. Do you need any slides or anything?
I hate to ask this, but yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll give you the PowerPoint.
You need some PowerPoint back?
It's the way we structure it. We're all speaking from the same one.
Okay.
Could you give around about the other one? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Derek Galloway. My address is 406 North Hill Street in Griffin. I am a lawyer, as most of you know. I was approached by the Faulkners initially to represent them on this and looked at the plans and looked at the issues related to the development, and my purpose tonight is to discuss just components of this that relate to the application of the waters. I do want to start with private water systems. You have in Upson County, according to EPD regs that I've, or records that I've seen, approximately 13 private well-water systems that provide public water to people within subdivisions. It's a matter of application, plan review, permitting, inspection by EPD, and two of the ones that are listed by EPD are Arrowhead Lake and Trium Hill Road. Trium Hill Road is east of Thomaston. Next slide, please. So those things will have to be worked out. The next thing I want to talk about, there's been a lot of discussion on the comprehensive plan. And if you would, I would like to call your attention down to the second line under the heading that says implementation. the second line under the heading that says implementation strategies. And it says, promote the use of conservation subdivisions to preserve the rural character and green space. Now, this property is identified in the forestry character area, but it's zoned AR. The AR zoning is going to supersede the character area designation. If you've got property and you want to do agriculture on that property, and it's in the forestry character area, you get to do it as a matter of right. But it also allows residential development. And a conservation subdivision is a subdivision that takes a tract of land, calculates the number of developable lots, and then allows them to be condensed in size in order to preserve green space. You do not have that in your ordinance, but it is developing as a standard subdivision practice in many places, and its intent is to preserve green space. Effectively, this development is a conservation subdivision, and while the lots are smaller than your two-acre minimum in AR, your density is going to equal that. In other words, one house to 2.1 acres is how this comes out. Miss Plaschke, that's a lot of poison. So we did a comparison between what can be done in AR and what can be done in PM. The principal difference is that PM gives you, as a local government, the flexibility to impose conditions unique to that property as a planned development. You're tying it to the site plan, you're tying it to Mr. Courier's conditions. Now, here are the differences that you have. If it's under AR, that's what can be done now. If it's under PM, that's what's proposed. So you can have a house size of 1,008 square feet in AR, minimum two acres, but you do have one dwelling unit and one guest quarters allowed, and there is no limitation, as I read the ordinance, Mr. Courier can correct me, but as I read the ordinance, there is no limitation on that guest quarters. So whether you intended it or not, your ordinance is allowing two dwellings on two acres, which is one unit, one dwelling unit, or one acre, as it is now. Under AR, you can see the type of housing that's permitted. There's nothing wrong with those types of housing, but you can compare that to what's proposed, and will be in the site built, in the PM zoning, and that's going to be site built. Under AR, each one of these lots could have a storage building less than thirty-five feet in height. If you go back to the amenity area, you see, and please, Mr. Chairman, let me know if I got five minutes.
Six.
Thank you. If you look at the amenity area, you will see that storage that would be on one tract, a building on each tract, is consolidated into community storage with architecture to match the architectural design of the houses. RV parking is the same. Your AR ordinance allows an RV on each lot, and in this development, community parking is limited to one location. Next slide, please. And when we talk about agriculture and what can be done in AR, there are other uses in AR that are much more offensive that can be done as a matter of right to the neighborhood. And each item and each use that I've identified up there is allowed in your AR zone as a matter of right. We like to think of agricultural zones and forests as these perfectly bucolic areas, but agriculture is land-intensive. Agriculture does not have to comply with soil erosion sedimentation control, alcohol, i-alcohol. Agriculture includes uses that will require vegetation herbicides and also pesticides for cropper land, if that's what you do. So I will conclude briefly that, yes, even though this is in your comp plan as forestry, the property is still zoned AR, and those uses, as shown up there, can be developed as a matter of right and would cause much more damage to the area surrounding it than what's been proposed. So to conclude, we support Mr. Courier's recommendation. Mr. Courier and I have fought plenty of times, but he's got it right on this one. And I will turn this over now to Ms. Faulner.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Sorry.
Chairman, my name is Autumn Faulner, and I currently live at 600 Holly Street here in Thomaston, Georgia. Since 2018, my husband Jim and I have been desiring property in Upson County to, for the first time ever, build our own forever home. We wanted property with elevation, water source, and if dreams really do come true, on Old Alabama Road. We've always loved this area and have spent countless hours hiking at Squirrel Bluff in preparation for our yearly section hikes of the Appalachian Trail. We wanted a beautiful country outdoor setting where our grandchildren, all ten of them, could hike, bike, camp, fish, kayak, and canoe. We've lived here for almost eighteen years. Upson County is our home. In May of 2023, this dream and desire began to come true. The property at 00 Double Bridges Road, as the address was listed, for sale publicly. We were on our way home from a Saturday afternoon hike at the bluff when we saw the sign. We contacted the realtor and scheduled a tour for June 10. We contacted Scott and Stephanie Gall and Andrew and Celia Cross, shared with them what we were looking at, and asked if they were interested in partnering with us. We all agreed, made an offer, and it was accepted June 15, with thirty days to do due diligence to see what could be done with such a large tract of land. Our first call was to yours truly Doug Courier, and Doug gave us information, guidance, and direction with the Upson County zoning ordinances. So thank you, Doug, in Guadalupe, for all your assistance. Professionals were consulted in the areas of road, electrical, wetland, soil engineering, wells, and conservation of wetlands. All answers showed that the property could be developed, and the purchase was made. The work began. The reason that the lots were timbered is because two forestry experts told us to do so. We hired Flint Forest Products to do it from October 23 to January of '24. April of '24, we consulted with Georgia Forestry Department, and we did hire them to do the controlled burn. And I do publicly apologize to Matt and Pamela Ricker. We did not know. Had we known that there was damage, we could have done something.
One minute.
One minute. We were advised by a county representative that to develop a subdivision, the zoning would have to be changed from AR. This eventually led to Doug Courier helping us determine that PM would be the appropriate rezoning to apply for. We then met Mr. Springetti and hired him to assist us with this development. In November of '24, we had a DRC meeting organized by Mr. Courier. All residents or all those in attendance were in favor, and included the Thurston Fire Department, Upson County Sheriff, EMC Engineering Services, District Network Engineering, Land Surveying, and Building and Zoning. Today, we're here with evidence that our proposed subdivision actually does, in fact, meet the comprehensive plan, and we are asking this Board of Commissioners to approve the rezoning so that our dream can become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that was the last of the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, hold on.
We both motioned and both.
Okay. Okay, you motioned the last time. So James Ellington, motion to close, and Commissioner Watson is the second. All in favor? Okay, the public hearing is closed. We'll now have some discussion on things that we heard tonight. Now, I'll do this. I wrote down some notes, but I think we'll start with Commissioner Biggs. Is there any questions that you have or concerns that you would like to?
Yes. In the first proposal, how many lots was included in the subdivision? Where the first proposal had?
On the application, it was a hundred and twenty-four.
And you said these homes arranged in, were from 650 to $1 million?
1.5.
1.5, yes.
Okay.
So I'm just thinking, what would that do to the surrounding property owners? Would that increase the property value? And if so, would they be able to meet those requirements? As far as property owners, that's been up to the last best. My second thing that I want to note, if what happens with the water volume to the surrounding houses, you know, if you put in a hundred and, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifteen houses there, what happens to the water pressure for the homes that are already there?
It's a great question. If you read the hydrology report, it has no effect on any of our neighbors because of the way they drill down to 150 to 200 feet, and that's not the water table. So if you read that document, it goes into that, and that was definitely something we, one, were concerned about. So it does not affect, and it reads in there that it affects about 25 to 50 feet from each well?
Hypothetical question here. What happens if that system fails?
If the well fails?
Yes.
You're gonna have to dig another well, or you're gonna have to go down further. That's why you do hydrology. I think most people probably don't do hydrology first. There's another second step to this where it's more comprehensive. It can actually tell you, tell us what the volume's gonna be, where it's fractured. Because all these wells are in fractures of the stone.
You all met with five rescue res for us in defense of emergencies. Would they be able to handle any emergency after that you only have?
Yes, sir. I've spoken multiple times with Chief Richard Pickden, and he is very excited about the development. And the hydrant that will go into the lake is under his jurisdiction according to the state fire marshal ordinances, and he told me that we would come under his score from his recent evaluation. That's not the right word, but we would come under that same score. So he's actually very in favor and showed that he's already thinking and how it's going to do the fire suppression.
Also, just listening to the surrounding property owners concerned, would that be in consideration as far as having a small amount of lots, let's say, instead of having 120, wrap it down to 75 to 100, and have everything on the two-acre tracks?
When you look at the infrastructure costs, they're significant because we have to put the roads in, all the electrical, all the amenities, and we really needed to be at that, that 124 so that it can be paid for. If you, again, go back to the drawing that we had up here today, you can see that by Alabama Road, those lots are significant. The smallest lot, and there's only one, is 1.5 acres. Otherwise, we've got 16 acres next to that, and three acres, and so on and so forth. And the, in my opinion, the treat lot in between, anybody can drive down Alabama Road and look for themselves. It's treat, for sure. The clearing they're speaking of is after they did the real estate cut to get, you know, again, at the request of the timbering, they cleaned out the underbrush, and that underbrush out by the road is gonna grow back, but it's still, if you look at it, it's quite camouflaged.
Also, on this main entry, would it have any effects on Old Alabama Road whatsoever?
No. In fact, we did, we had the traffic studies done at peak times, which we would consider seven to nine o'clock in the morning and four to six o'clock at night. They estimated that there may be one, if everybody left at the same time, there'd be one car, it'd be five minutes, coming out, coming in or out of our subdivision. So that's a traffic study that they already did. So I know there's hypotheticals out there, but we had the study done, so it's pretty normal. And I can appreciate people saying, well, on the weekends, everybody's going to Squirrel Bluff. Well, in theory, many of us stay home on the weekends as well. So if that's the case, if the traffic count goes up because of Squirrel Bluff, more of our people are also staying home on the weekend, like we all do. And it's just, it's, I know it's a factor to residents, but when you look at the numbers, it's a non-factor.
Also, what I see also will be affecting the traffic on 74. So, you know, if you have that many homes out there, how many of these kids gonna be school-aged kids? How many school buses would it take to pick up the amount of kids that are out there? And you're gonna find yourself, we're gonna have to slow down traffic on 74.
We had the school represented at the DRC meeting in November, and he was in favor of it. He didn't have any issues with providing housing.
Okay. Commissioner Ellington, District Two?
Well, first of all, this is my district. Come from maybe where the Faulners, you know, early on, seeing the, I guess, the early stages renderings of this, it's, it's, it's not what I saw originally, and I understand this is a, it's a business decision for them. But, you know, I don't have a lot of questions because the answers to the questions are here. You just gotta look for them. I have some concerns, you know. Obviously, I gotta represent the people of that district. They elected me to be their representative, and I gotta express their concerns. I mean, the PR zoning is spot zoning. And I can say, well, if you go out into the middle of AR and you draw a circle, and it doesn't touch anything else but AR, and you change the zone, and you just spot zone. That's the definition textbook definition of spot zoning. And I don't care if the attorney shakes his head. The attorney did not. You know, that's high density. I don't, there's no infrastructure there to support high-density developments out there. This is rural. I mean, in their own report, it states that the hydrologist does not recommend, they recommend a community well, but we just heard tonight that they're gonna drill individual wells. But that's the permit, that's between them. My thing is, I think Plan Commission got it right. This is a high-density development. It's unfortunate, but it's a high-density development in the middle AR, and it just, it just doesn't fit the area.
Keep it down.
Can't, can't. All right, District Three.
I'm willing to agree with both Chris and on his questioning and everything. I guess he got a lot, you know, a lot of answers out of those few questions he had. And James has done a tremendous job really explaining what the feel of the room is. And I'm gonna...
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of questions and clarifications. So regarding the individual wells, is the request for individual wells or community well?
I think it's a combination of both, and that's for the hydrologist to decide once he does the next step in the test. Because he's gotta go, you can't make that determination from the first test. We're just looking to make sure there's water available and what's it look like. And you look at the map, there's a number that equates to that. It's how it kinda gives us an idea. So it could be a combination in some areas of the subdivision that may have to be a high-density well, high capacity.
So if that second study comes back and it says no individual wells, community wells, is that something y'all are gonna pursue?
Well, let me clarify. On that report, there is three sections out of the six sections that said there is. On that report, there is three sections out of the six sections that said there is ample water for individual wells. And there's a couple that the numbers are kind of on the fence, and there was one area that was high. And so that's why he made that recommendation, that you may have to do high-capacity well and do a community well, one or two. So the way it's written is if you do one high-capacity well, they make you do two in case one fails. So that's pretty common. So I think that if we find out that there truly is enough water, then it would be individual wells, and it might be a combination of both, depending on that. Now, we have, we have to, we have an obligation and responsibility to our homeowners ahead of time that we have to know. So the process would look from there. Once they do their next test, is then they would do, the well driller would come in and do some test drills to kind of tell us, okay, here's what we have and here's what we need.
Okay. And then regarding the property lines, on the site plan, are they proposed to be center of the road?
No. They, there's a, you have the, obviously, a setback or easement where the roads go. So then it's from the curb of the road out is where those lines would be.
All right. And last question is, what's the history, what's y'all's history of developing subdivisions similar to this?
I have been in development for 31 years. For me, this checked all the boxes. I'm fortunate enough that at my age, I get to pick the really neat ones, that I say, okay, this is special, and here's why it's special. And it's not just the land itself, it's also this community. And that's what we're selling to the people that wanna get out of the rat race and come here and enjoy what you enjoy. And I think there's room for 124 homes in this community.
Gotcha. And then one more question, back to the wells. If it is individual wells, looking at the cost to do those back to the homeowners, county water, running the county water, I know is expensive, but it's gonna be comparable. Is running county water a no for y'all, or is it not?
When you talk to the people that actually do the well drilling, and you actually compare assuming it's about $2 million to bring it out, and those are some assumptions, to be fair, but it doesn't equate, it's much less expensive to do the individual wells. This is coming from the person who's very well-known here, who does all the well drilling around here. It's definitely more affordable. And if we had to do some community wells, that's significantly more affordable. So just taking 124 lots and saying, okay, here's the X factor of what it costs, is not truly a comparison. We don't have any engineered studies of how to even get the water out there if you were to bring it up. The county was actually surprised when we told them about this because the planning committee was pushing this. They said, I thought you're gonna do wells. And we're like, yes, we wanna do wells. So we had the hydrology done because as developers, we didn't know if there's water there. We can't have people come in and buy one of our lots and build one of our homes without knowing there's water. So we were motivated to know ourselves. And we really did get confirmation that there weren't any issues. And that was after the well, the well driller, he told us the same thing, there's plenty of water around there. Well, we can't go by that because that certainly sounds self-serving potentially, right? So we went and hired Dan to come and do it, and he did a great job. He's been in the business 51 years, very reputable.
Okay. Yeah, and so, I mean, I guess my biggest concern is really related to the lot sizes. I know somebody mentioned that it was 52% of the development. In my opinion, less than 2 acres is too small. And I know the average is 2.1, but you gotta look at the individual lots itself. So that's my biggest concern.
May I add something? I actually did the calculation. If we were to sell all 124 lots, which we expect that people will buy multiple lots, from the very beginning, we were debating larger lots versus smaller lots. And the idea was that if people wanted a larger lot, they could buy multiple lots. So we don't expect there to be actually 124 homes because there'll be people that will buy multiple lots. But the other thing is that if we did sell all 124 lots and everybody built a 4,500 square foot home, and then we add the amount of land at the roads and parking lot, and all of our amenities are covering, it's only 8% of the total land. 92% of the property will remain just as it is. That is not high-density. That's all I have to tell.
Okay. All right. So Doug, I want you to remind us, what are we here to vote on tonight? It's not a subdivision. It is to rezone from AR to...
PM.
All right. And what are we supposed to be considering when we decide whether we will rezone from AR to PM?
Well, you've got the comprehensive plan, you've got the requirements of the PM zoning, you certainly have the requirements of the AR zoning that surrounds it. And then again, if you're considering it, you're also positively, you also need to approve the development plan with the rezoning and that schedule that we looked at, that has to be part of the approval. It's unique in PM that you have to approve those ancillary things too. And of course, the zoning district and all those requirements, five pages of a zoning district. And then there were five additional conditions I recommended there's sort of inside the zoning.
So those requirements for the zoning district, you know, as a governing authority, we have to look at safety, have to look at health, have to look at morality. That's generally like, is there gonna be a tattoo parlor or anything like that in this PM zone? And we have to look at the surrounding area. This is what I read from our ordinances. It also says that it is designed, we consider those things, and do those things have any impact on the other, in the area that would prevent the unrestricted use by the landowner, the person who has invested into the property, right? That's what it says. So, you know, what we're struggling with tonight, and it's a struggle, I'm not gonna lie, is that we have someone who's invested in our property, right? And then we have others who have invested in properties that are around there, right? That's the real rub that we're talking about tonight, right? And, you know, back in seventh grade social studies, we had this concept that was very hard to direct your head around, is that, you know, your rights end where someone else's rights begin, right? And you can't scream fire in a theater. You can't cause, inflict fear on someone else. That was the kind of example. But it also really applies when we talk about property, right? So you have a right to do what you wanna do on your property, and you have a right to do it without interference from the government, right? Except for safety and health. You know, there's codes that we have to apply. You know, you can't just wire up anything, right? So that's what our role is, right? And then when we look at what our ordinances tell us to do, we have to say, how does it affect the general area, the character of the area? And so we refer to our comprehensive plan for that, right? The comprehensive plan is forestry. And as we pointed out, it does say low-density residential is the future of that area. That's what the comprehensive plan explicitly states. It also, when we look at what is low-density, because we have these conversations like, I think it's high, I think it's medium, I think it's low. We don't have that, Doug, do we? In Upson County, we don't have a number that says this many buildings per acre is low-density, and above this is medium-density, and above this is high-density. We don't have that written into our ordinance. What we do have is a part of our ordinance that is explicitly low-density, right? And if you read the ordinance, that explicit low-density is one single-family home per one acre, right? And then the other thing we have to consider, when we talk about the water and the wells, and whether they're gonna have 124 wells, and whether they're gonna have 124 septic systems, is that is not what we're here to decide tonight. We're here to decide, can this be rezoned from AR to PM, right? And if they can have these lots or not with one well and one septic tank, it's decided by the public health department, right? And in the state of Georgia, the policy is, on one acre, you can have one well, you must have one septic system, and you must have an area where you can back up if that septic system fails. If we bring in public water, the state policy is, you can have one septic system and a backup in a single-family home on a half an acre of land. That's the policy in the state. So I just wanna be clear factually with what we're talking about. So what I heard tonight was a theme. If y'all didn't hear the theme, I had a number of people email me over the past week, and those people who spoke tonight, and the theme I heard was, I moved here. We have people move from all over the country to Western Upson County. It's incredible. If you go out there and ask, where'd you come from, where'd you come from? They're not from here. They're from Colorado, they're from all over the place. And why? Because it's beautiful. We live out there. And, you know, I bought land next to me, right, to buffer myself. Another tract of land became available last week. I put an offer in today to get that tract of land because I love where I'm at and I wanna have what I have. And I think that's where everybody feels, right? That's what everybody feels. And so that's really the rub. And the other thing I heard, you know, we talked about the density, whether it's one acre per house or whatever. In the comprehensive plan, it explicitly says this conservation residential for this area, which was described earlier. And I don't know if you know, but there's other subdivisions nearby, like over in Monroe County, that are built just this way. And even though the homes are owned smaller lots, when you drive through there, it's hard to discern that they're on a smaller lot. And why is that? Because of all the nature that is still there, right? You can't tell where their property line ends because they don't have fences. They have woods in between the homes. And so I know there seems to be a fixation on the lot size, but my gut tells me that you're not gonna be able to tell when you drive out there. The other thing is, it's a gated community, and you're gonna see what's on Old Alabama Road. The other thing I heard, and I talked to the chairman of the planning commission this morning, right, and it was about the commercial. What will this commercial be, right? I know they presented plans for like a snack bar or coffee shop. And when I spoke to the chairman, he's like, I'm all for that. It'd be great if people could come and get coffee right there or whatever, but we don't know what they're gonna do. And so we'll have to make a motion tonight, but we have a lot of things that we can do here. We don't have to like blank check this or blank check that, right? We could say, yes, we can approve the PR, but it can only have C1 commercial in it, only neighborhood-type commercial in it. And we could say, it can only have C1, but it can't have a gas station, right? Because it's, you know, it can have a small restaurant and a cafe, it could have a coffee shop, you know, but it can't have, you know, things that you, it won't be a Dollar General out there.
No, there won't.
So I say all that to say, I've been reading and reading and reading, right, to try to be factual, right? Try to be fair, because there's multiple parties here. There's parties who believe, and there's no, nothing wrong with them believing that their area's gonna change, right? That what, their dream is gonna change because someone else is coming in. But what the ordinance is saying is that we have to show that there will be an economic impact on those in the area negatively in order to address that, right? In order to say no to their right to use their land unrestricted, just as you have the right to use your land unrestricted. So anyway, I say all that because I want you to know that we've spent a lot of time looking at this, right? And it's not easy. And we have, the lot size is contentious for some, right? But when it's spelled out in our comprehensive plan, that this is it, if we say no, what is the option? To appeal it to us, right? They can appeal it to us, right? And if we say no again, what's the option? We go to court, to superior court. That's how it kind of, that's the process. I read all about the process. I'm like, what? How does this work? These people have invested a lot of money, maybe they're life savings, I don't know. But we really need to understand the gravity of the decision that we have to make here tonight. And so that's all I'm gonna say about it. There's a lot of things, but a lot of the things are not for tonight's decision. Tonight's decision is, can we rezone to PR? Can we rezone to PR with conditions? Or do we say no? That's really where we're at. I've spoke a lot. I don't wanna take up the whole. If y'all feel like I overspoke and you need to say something else, I'm fine with y'all saying something else. All right. All right. Are we done with the, wait? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve from AR to PR? Do I have a second?
PM.
PM, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
That we deny the PM zoning, based on comprehensive plans.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Ellington to deny. Okay, let me ask the lawyer. So if we pass a motion, if we have a motion to deny, and that motion fails, that doesn't mean it's approved. True or false? Because you're doing a negative, you know. So if we did a motion to approve...
You failed to get a second.
You didn't get a second.
You didn't get a second. So your motion dies like a second. I'm gonna...
Okay. Okay. So a motion to deny by Commissioner Ellington, and a second by Commissioner Jones to deny. Any discussion before we have it up? No discussion? Okay. Call roll?
Chairman, broom?
No.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beigs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries for a one to deny the PR PM zoning. All right. If you wanna leave after the public hearing, that's perfectly fine. Just make it see your way out. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna give five minutes for clear out. Well, we're just taking five minutes for everybody to get out.
I saw yes, he's the road.
There'll be more to come.
Steve, you're up next. Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue. Give everybody three minutes to get out. Next is public comments. And I think you're the only one to sign up. If you want to approach and-
Yes. Steve Blackston, 95 Peacock Road, The Rock. And to make this easier, last time I was here, you were saying that you had to update the ordinance for distances from a liquor sales to anywhere else. Has the county review that you said in your next executive session, you were going to do that? Has that been done?
We not had an executive session.
Or the next time you met, you were going to do that?
We did talk about it in the work session.
Yes, the work session, I'm back. So has there been any adjustments to it?
That's kind of gets drawn with it.
Okay, so with that, you can take it for what it's worth. I got something on each one of them. I know the last one was out, the Fellowship Baptist Church, other Sunny Side. That one is 360 feet from the front door to the front door of the church. So that's fine unless they consider it an educational place, and then it's got to be 200 yards, which is 600 feet, which it doesn't meet. And according also to the Georgia Code, or the Code of Georgia Title III Alcoholic Beverages, that the grocery store, I believe is what they're calling it out there at Sunny Side, is that correct? It has to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet where 85% of the reserve for sale food and other non-alcoholic items to even dispense or sell according to Georgia law, which that one according to the Upson County taxes shows 7,010 square feet. Also, if you get into the rules and regulations from the state of Georgia, it goes on and says that it has to have a, when they apply for a license, they have to have a certificate or scale drawing or a registered surveyor that has proposed location that it will meet the distances. And last time I was here, Mr. Courier was talking about the distances that were used go around fences and everything. Also, according to the rules and regulations of state of Georgia, Rule 560-2-2-12 states that you have to go over and through any obstacles. The department will ignore obstacles added by the licensee or any other party such as fences or other improvements or obstructions added with the purpose of increasing the measurement of distances. And where the removal of such obstacles would result in the premises not satisfying the distance requirement. When you do decide to update that, there's going to be a lot of places in Upson County that are requesting a license to sell. Currently, the Upson County is completely out of violation with it because these are in effect since 2007. So I'm just curious. It's one of those things. I'm a resident here. I'm also a pastor here, children's pastor. I know the gentleman's here last time brought up the fact that it's not all right, it's all right to drink. And you know what? The Bible does not say that thou shall not. It says you shall not partake in much. But there's also a point where where's much? But if you would like a copy of that, I have all those here that are individual. I'll be glad to leave them here and let them be passed out. You can use them, you can throw them away. But that was just my thing I wanted to bring back. And I'd like to know when that is changed. Because that's something that's on my mind, on my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the consent agenda. And so I'll go over this real quick so we know what we're dealing with here. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on March 25th and the minutes from the work session on April 29th. There are also paving of the parking lot at the airport. We discussed during the work session. There is a tea splash? There's a grant that the airport has, and they're seeking matching funds from the DOT to do that. The next item was local road administration funding. That money is at the Poe Diddy Bridge.
Old Potato Creek.
Potato Creek. Yeah, so that, those funds were not expected. They were additional funds that the General Assembly provided this year. We do have an issue with the bridge. And so we're going to apply this money towards that bridge and attempt to get the matching money so that we can extend the life of that bridge for 15 years. And we do not have another bridge out in Upson County. That is our intent. The last item on here was a recommendation from insurance broker to adopt a hot work policy. And that was simply to update our policies for when like you're welding and doing things that could cause fire. There's certain things that you should do beforehand to make sure it's safe. And that's just complying with our insurance company that has to pay, you know, workers' comp and things like that. So that was also talked about at the work session. So without any further ado, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Show move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Jones. I have a second from Commissioner Biggs.
Chairman, broom?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay. And then we're going to move on to new business. Reading and acceptance of a proclamation for Senior Hunger Awareness Month. Okay, I'll read it right here. Senior Hunger Awareness Month 2025, a proclamation. Whereas the health and well-being of all seniors in Upson County is important to the growth, prosperity, and welfare of our area's families, communities, and economy. And whereas the month of April is Senior Hunger Awareness Month, which provides an opportunity for communities across Upson County to focus on the issue of senior hunger and to organize a movement to help end senior hunger in our county. And whereas, according to the latest report on the state of senior hunger from Feeding America, there are nearly 191,000 Georgia seniors who do not know how they will purchase their next balanced meal. And whereas 8.5% of senior population in Georgia are at risk for hunger, food insecurity seniors tend to have lower nutrition intake, more chronic health conditions, poor self-reported health status, length of hospital stays, and greater hospital readmissions, and greater out-of-pocket medical expense. Now therefore, the Upson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025, 2025, as Senior Hunger Awareness Month in Upson County, proclaim this 22nd day of April 2025, Board of Commissioners of Upson County. I have a motion to approve the proclamation.
Sir, move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson to approve. I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Chairman, broom?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
So the next item on the agenda was an add-on item, and that has to do with roads in the particular subdivision. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, just briefly. I think everybody saw the engineer's email. And ultimately, the current, the road work is being done out in County Village. Most of the roads are getting paved. I've had several constituents in that neighborhood reach out asking why we aren't paving some of these other short roads. And looking at the score and the cost associated with it, I think it would make sense that we go ahead and hit those while we're in there. I think we get a good bang for our buck because we're able to get the current unit rates. So it was discussed with Jason and our engineer that we would try to approve this or do whatever tonight so we can give them some direction before they pull out.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the record, it's East Maple, Kudzu, Fescue, Acorn, and Honeysuckle. Any varying lengths between .15 of a mile to .48. So you're looking at .16, .09, .1, .25, and .48. Estimated cost to add those would be $84,000. Funding source would be our transportation sales tax. Included a quick update from the finance office with about $8.3 million in our project fund, of which 2.8 is encumbered. And then we have some in our debt service reserve fund. We have about $9.3 million in available funds. It wouldn't necessarily require us to change any of our future plans, which do include a roughly a $1.2 million match for our Elmeg project, which is the entire length of Jeff Davis Road. So that's our county match portion of that. And then what will become our county match portion of the LRA project that you just approved in your consent agenda, the LRA funding was roughly $850,000 for about a $1.2 million project. So the difference of that also would come from this budget. So we're in no way endangering those two very important projects if the board decides to approve these. Lastly, I would say that the board did consider adding these initially during the June work session in 2024. I went back to our notes. They were footnoted on the side. Because of the size and scope of the bond issue, it was decided at that time that based on estimates, we wouldn't include them in the initial bid cycle. But obviously, that project came in, and I'm not looking at the number. It came in lower than estimates, so there are funds available to do it.
I got a question. And I was hoping Chris would show up tonight. They ended up with a load and a half of asphalt left. And then they decided to just go ahead and throw it down on Fescue Street. So how did they end up with a load and a half of asphalt?
I can't answer that question, sir. And I was not aware of that until I read at the same time you did.
And so are we charged for that asphalt if they don't put it down? What do they send it back? What do they do with it? I want to know. I mean, if somebody overestimated a dump truck and a half of asphalt overage, did we pay for that? Are they taking it back? Are they dumping it somewhere? They just happened to have a street right there they could have throwed it on? I want to know. That's a lot of asphalt. You know, we could have, you know, it just wasn't, something wasn't planned right. So I just want to know. Then back to Ben's thing. I'm okay with them. You know, while they're in the hood, if we got the money. It's only three streets.
Five total.
It's five, four or five.
Yeah.
So four more streets.
Yeah, I pulled up on the map last night, you know? So they did all the long streets with all the short streets. And it's like-
It's an old subdivision.
Now, just for, potentially for another point of clarification, when the board was considering them during the work session last year, part of the methodology was because they were mostly ranked 70 above on our Paces score. That's why they were left off. So the roads that were originally part of the original let were below 70. Some in the low 60s, so.
Well, I mean, if it hadn't been right there where we're already working, they don't have to move over there to do it. It makes sense in my mind.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we approve adding the five roads. Don't need to state them. East Maple, Kudzu, Fescue's already been addressed, Acorn, and Honeysuckle.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Jones.
Chairman, broom?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
So that tight security hold might be exactly right.
Okay. Next up is comments.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I'll be brief. I just want to thank all the members of our planning commission and all the employees in our planning department. I mean, to put it very bluntly, they're a lot busier than we ever have been. And I think they've shown a high degree of professionalism. They're managing workload very well. We're very, very grateful to have their competence and and their willingness to go above and beyond. So I think regardless of whether the planning commissioner or the board approves or denies, you know, our job is the same, is to present you with the information that you need.
It's all about facts.
So I just, so to all of our volunteers that serve in that commission and to all the staff that they work with, I just wanted to say thanks publicly. That's all I have.
Okay. County attorney, you anything for us?
I think I already said we had a solid day in probate court today. We disposed of, I want to say 100% of the cases. And there was, it was a long calf, long day. I said that earlier too. I think I walked out at like 5:05. And we'd been there since 6:04, 9:00. So I don't have the case count. I'm going to guess more than 60. But, you know, it takes a lot of addressing everyone, so.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes. You know, as a newly-elected commissioner, I have to be honest. I have received a whole bunch of phone calls. But majority of the calls I have received, I must say, is concerning roads. Everybody wants the road paved. Road paved, everybody. Me, as a newly-elected commissioner, I'd like to have an answer. You know, as to when this road will be paved, how do you get your road on the list to be paved? Who makes the decision of what roads should be paved? What is the protocol that we need is to pave each road except? I would like to get from Jason and the road superintendent just to sit down and get a clarification of how we determine what roads should, should and when they should be paved.
That sounds very fair.
Yes. As an example, I have a prime example of that. In my district, we did a paving, and we had probably eight tenths of a mile left on the street that I know the score had to be 35. But we moved equipment to another area of district one that I know the score of the square was set, and we paved the whole road.
So they paved the road that they didn't finish?
They didn't pave all of the road. I got the same thought. Dobby Gordon?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
When it turns, it goes back to the bridge before it turns back into ocean. They didn't pave that portion.
Yep.
Well, they didn't really pave it anyway. That was one where we put the surface strip on.
That's Gordon School Road.
The Gordon School Road.
And basically, when you're driving, you're driving like a drunk person. Dust, I hope.
They did not, I don't know if that was oversight. If that wasn't even an oversight, but that road does turn there and goes down to the dirt, to a bridge. Are you familiar with that? Was that oversight or no? And was it-
No, it wasn't designed that way.
Anything else? If you want to put your number out on YouTube, you can get more calls.
That's saying, I've got some training coming up this week, you know, look forward, getting that over and done with. I wish I could go close my eyes and it was over. You know, as we move into the summer months, we're going, I hope that we have a lot of productive meetings, but we got a lot of stuff on the table we need to talk about. You know, and I mentioned, I'm going to just bring it up tonight. I don't have the exact terminology for it, but the new 911 system, is it anybody? But, you know, the state right, it's scary when the state starts off studying how we're going to pay for it because that means it's going to cost a lot of money. So I can't, I can't stress enough, we need to get ahead of this. Let's don't be at the end of this. Let's get ahead of it and start looking at it. I've had some one-off talks with Jason about it. I mean, and I'm just throwing things out here so, you know, I don't want the newspaper or radio to call me out on this. But, you know, it may be time for, it's maybe, I'm not saying it is, I don't have the information, but it may be time for us to look at doing some type of regional on 911 system. And I get it, a lot of people go, ah, you can't, they don't know. Well, you know what? People that's answering 911 phone calls right here today probably don't live here. And if they do, they don't know how to have to count. So, you know, with the technology we got today, if somebody's able to answer that phone, with the technology we got, it don't matter where they're at. They can get you where you need to be. You know, the only other thing I want to say is, is, you know, and it's just, I guess, a general statement, and we've been having a lot of automobile accidents lately around here, and I've seen a lot of life flights. That's concerning. And I mean, as we grow, these types of things are going, going to develop. And, you know, I've had people reach out to me and say, hey, you know, what are we doing about our drug problem? And I know we're limited to what we can do about those type of things. And then, and then we read a proclamation like tonight, you know, and that's great. I mean, that's, that's great. We acknowledge that's great, but what are we doing about it? You know, if we ain't really doing anything about it, we just, we just went through the motions. So I'm just challenging you guys. I'm not, I'm just challenging everybody. Those are the type of things, you know, you got an opportunity to do something with. I mean, you know, when you get into these tense situations on zoning and stuff like that, it's hard to make a huge difference that you can see today. But things like that, we can make a difference pretty quick. And that's basically it. I do know I got a month of the meeting, the June meeting, I won't be able to attend, I'll be out of town. Just putting everybody on notice on that one. And we have rescheduled our work session. 14th?
14th.
14th, okay. And, other two questions. Are we ready for primetime at the new justice complex for video?
I got an update last week, so they're waiting, they're simply just waiting on the camera that they ordered. They've got everything else wired, is my understanding. We're days away.
All right. What about our, our mobile camera?
For work sessions?
Work sessions, that type of thing. Yeah. We won't even go there anymore. You're on it, I got.
I know.
You know, and the last comment I got tonight, you know, obviously, as we grow and we're going to grow, I think everybody can acknowledge that we're going to grow, we've still got to shape that future. I think it's important for this board to also continue to, let's continue to work on, you know, it sounds like we need to go back to the beginning and to determine what they are actually is to us and then rule, you know. That makes sense. But let's identify it. But, you know, I'm always going to err on that side. I'm just going, that's why I'm here. That's why I spent my 58 years here. That's what I'm always agreeful, agree with, is I like rule and I think if you want to be in the city, you need to move to the city. If you want to be ruled, you move to the county. I'm sorry.
Fair enough.
But that's really all I got to say.
All right. Yeah, I did talk to Philip today, you know, we got to sit down, we all need to get in the same room. And I told him about, you know, I talked to my neighbor, where they're at, they have this other zone called Ag 5, you know. So there's, there's other things out there we can look at, figure out what size is the smallest size you could have and be rule. I think that's the question. Biggest question.
Well, the big difference in rural and adding a street and adding a bunch of houses to it is a big difference. So you threw...
It's your turn.
So, yeah, you know, you sit up here and you got to, you got to weigh everything. You can't just weigh what this person wants, what that person wants.
It's hard.
It's really, you got to make a decision for the whole county, not just that section of county, not just that section of county, or this little group of folks over here that want this, or this little group that doesn't want this. This is what benefits all of us. And sometimes you have to, you might have to bullet and know what's, what's right for everybody. And I think we did what we needed to do tonight. It just, in my opinion, just did not fit in that area. That's just my personal opinion. And I think it's better for the county. I'm sure they're going to come back with another plan and then we'll talk about the other plan. I mean, I know they're not going away, you know, it's just, they're not going far away. It's a great place to live, great place to work, it's a great community, and we all got to try to figure out what it's going to be like when we're ready to leave this earth. So I got told this a long time ago, and I really never, ever thought about it. There are very, very few people in this world that own land since the 1700s. 99% of the land has been sold, and sold, and sold, and sold. There are a few, I mean, I know of one 200-year-old farm in Upton County that was a land deed from back in the 1700s. And then there's, and there's probably another one somewhere too. But I always wondered why you would go by and see these vacant farmhouse. Always wondered why you went by and why didn't somebody take care of it? Why didn't somebody want it? And then when my parents died, I understood why. There was nine of us kids. We've all had a got our own lives and we've moved on in the world. And we didn't want the home place. And I ended up having to sell it. And that's what happens. We're, we're just a placekeeper on this earth. We don't own the land. And we just got to make a decision on how we want our community to be. And I'm doing it.
All right. Mr. Watson?
Yep. Well, first, I think everybody's aware I'm one of the coaches for my son's baseball team. And in the, in the break, I got a note that he had one of his best games, so it sounds like I need to miss more of those. But, yeah, thank you guys for, you know, supporting those additional roads and making the accommodation for the work session. Regarding the rezoning, one thing I was going to point out is the importance of the constituents reaching out to everyone. You know, this was not in my district, but I've received phone calls, emails, and that's helpful, you know, because we're making decisions on behalf of the constituents. And it's nice to hear, you know, what everybody has to say. So I would encourage everybody to continue to do that. And then the other thing regarding this particular rezoning, I know the planning and zoning spent three-plus months reviewing this. We had maybe four days once we got the material. I would just ask in the future, especially projects of this size, if the planning and zoning makes a recommendation in our meetings, the next meeting, it would be on the following meeting so we have more time to digest it. Just something to think about. That's it.
Okay. All right. I just got a couple of things. First is the FLOST. So we had a meeting out at a fellowship Baptist church last week, and I went over some options for FLOST. I will be back out at Thurston on Thursday night to talk about FLOST again. So, you know, we as a body haven't decided what option we want, you know. And so I explicitly say that these are, these are ideas, these are options. But we need to move forward with the city and we need to come together, we need to come up with the option and so we can get it on the ballot. Because it's not about the county or the city, it's about the taxpayer. This is all about benefiting the taxpayers and we need to make sure we get this done. The next item on my list here, I saw you on my list, but I wanted to talk about is Brightmark. So if you haven't seen it, there's a new article out today from Ledger Examiner. So, and in there, I did speak with Kayla and so I noted that I did speak with, with Bob Powell over the phone. And I spoke about our last meeting, right, and what our constituents were saying. And I think in the article, they note that he watched our last meeting and he, he said he would look at Tammy Boyle's proposal for a surety bond and look into that. So I wanted to share that, I did have that conversation with him. And they are keenly aware of what's going on in these meetings and then the public comments made, and that's what public comments are for. So just wanted to share that with you and that's really all I got for tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Third.
Yeah, a second from Commissioner Ellington. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.